Thank you for coming to our board meeting. Right now, we have a special treat. Case Hoy is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Case. You did such a wonderful job. Thank you. Before we proceed any further, I just want to do a few housekeeping things. Do we have members of the media here or online? We'd like you to introduce yourself. Media? Okay, online? Okay. Also, please mute your cell phones. And if you're wanting to speak during public participation, there is a sheet to fill out in the back. And just remembering that anybody that speaks, please turn on the mic. And when you, before you speak, and turn it off when you're finished. And now, we have a very special treat. We have our fourth graders singing a song for us. And so, kids, take it away. Weren't they great? Oh, man. Let's give them another hand. That was awesome. I also think we need to thank their teacher, Izzy Trinkle. Thank you. Well, that does my heart proud. At this point in our meeting, we'd like to invite Principal Endicott to come. Looks like he's helping with the kids. He is going to give our principal report for this wonderful school. So take it away whenever you're ready, Principal Endicott.
We'll see if I remember how to work this stuff. One, wow. Thank you, Ms. Trinkle, 4th grade, Case Hoy, families. Thank you to the board. Thank you to the administration. Thank you to staff to come. Wednesday night at 6:00 is always tough. And you know, the special teacher, Ms. Trinkle, kind of has a crinkle in her face when the principal comes up and says, "Hey, I got a little idea," right? So I had a little idea, and I thought it went well. But we appreciate you guys. We appreciate your time last Thursday on tour to look at our facilities, and we appreciate your time today. So we kind of do realize what it's like to sit in those seats, and we know that big salary you guys get, right? And first, I want to say, our team is really dedicated. They're dedicated to working very hard. So you know, all the things we're going to talk about, we want to refine and get better. But I can, I can tell you and, and make sure that everybody, we are, we are working hard. We're working hard for the students, and we're working hard to try to make ourselves better every day. Our goal is to continue to find collective efficacy, though, because we can't work really harder. We know we're working pretty dang hard, but we can maybe try to, to refine our practice, work together, and have collective goals so that we can reach all students. All right. So it might be hard to see on the monitor, but one thing that I was asked was, what makes Sunny Slope special? Well, we have Emily there on the left, Kira on the right, and they're part of what makes us special. At Sunny Slope, where the suns, and so we shine, so we're safe, helpful, involved, nice, and empathetic. So a little poem that kind of goes with that is, "In every class where learning starts, we grow bright minds and caring hearts. Safe in our actions, kind in tone, helpful hands are always shown. Involved in work, we give our best. Nice to each, we pass the test. Empathetic, empathetic voices guide the way, together stronger every day. One vision shared, both near and far. At Sunny Slope, we shine like stars. For every child, our creed is clear, a place of shine, we all hold dear." So we really embody that shine, that being safe, helpful, involved, nice, and empathetic here. Every day, the kids have a chant, and we affirm this so that we have a way to go back every day and say, are we being safe? Are we being helpful? Are we being involved? Are we being nice? Are we being empathetic? And we love this, that we are special. And that does make us, yet we know as a district, we're special, right? We are one out of eight elementaries. We're one out of 11 schools. And I really want to come together as a district. I think we're special, and I'm really happy about that one little piece we play in the Gestalt of everything, right? We are one little cog, but, but these 260 kids, these 50 staff, really are part of the whole district that I'm proud to be a part of. So we appreciate that. Now, another thing, there was two slides, so Chelsea put two slides on, so we have enough about being special. But really, the thing that makes us special is we have three goals, and everybody in my school knows them. I could tell the students out there, what's our number one goal? If any students here, every morning, being here, attendance, right? We can't learn reading and math if we're not here. So every day, we talk about the fact that we reward that positive attendance, and our numbers are playing from staff to students to our community. Last year, we were at 69% regular attenders. We want to raise that to 75. That's a 6% increase. And this is on a successive increase from 50 to 60 to 62 to 67, 69. So attendance is really hard right now. We're all working on it, but I will tell you, we keep moving in a positive direction, and when we get to graphs, you'll see that. And then for this year, we also, we want to do better in literacy. We're focused on that. We are at 41%. That is an increase from last year. 100%, we gained quite a bit. We hit my, my personal goal of 5%. We raised 70. But that means we've got to do more, right? We've got to get to 45. Because sadly, when I look at 45, that means 55% of our students are still not reading where we want them to. So again, we want to continue to refine our practices. We want to work collectively and raise that goal. And lastly, we look at math, right? We've had some, some great success in math. We continue to keep gaining. But we want to, we want to still reach for that, so we have a 5% goal. But every, all my students, all of our staff and our community recognize that this collective effort is what, what we desire, and we do that through clear goals and expectations to continue to have this success. So I had to put, thank you, Dr. Weber, because we always like to talk about our inquiry cycle, right? But how we do that is, we do look at our attendance, and we're the yellow line there. We've raised up. We're, I think, above the state average. We're still not where we want to be, but we keep having continued success in that. And we look at it from the school-wide perspective, what can we do better there? The grade level, the class, and the individual. And then when we start looking at that, one of the things we do in attendance, in language arts, in math, is we analyze our data. We set goals. We learn and plan. What, how, how are we going to get better at, at these things? Then we do the work. We actually have the instruction. We do the things that make it go, and then we check, right? Our guidance is, we check the map. Are we heading in a direction we're supposed to head? And then we decide, is it working or not? If it's working, how do we make it a little bit better? If it's not, say, hey, man, we kind of, we, we turned wrong, and we, we need to go others. So that's the analyze data, set goals, learn individually and collaboratively, implement new learning, and then monitor access. So we always want to continue to think, hey, what are we doing? Is it working? How do we make it better? And again, every year, you'll see we've had continued success because we keep that progress up. That's one of our, our, our goals. And language arts. Again, these guys, the staff that are here, they work hard, incredibly hard. This year is probably one of our biggest lifts that I've seen, and this is my sixth year here, with changing our ELA instruction curriculum, changing how we do things. But I would tell you, they're doing it, and they're striving. They're doing awesome work with these kids, I will tell you. Part of that growth is because we're on year three of our, our continuous improvement plan, right? We look at what we're doing every year. We take note of what we've done. We make sure, hey, this is what we were successful at. This is where we needed to grow. And we have those honest conversations and say, we need to grow because our, our students deserve it. Our 5D problem of practice this year is breaking into it and making sure that some of these things, like adding extra time, are we doing it well? Are we adding that extra time? Are we going from our 60-minute block to our 120-minute block? Are we going from our 60-minute block to 90-minute, if it's 4th and 5th grade? We're looking at our new curriculum, making ourselves better. I will tell you, that's been a big, big lift this year. We're revising our MTSS, right? How we do multi-tiered systems of support with core review, intervention placement, intervention review meetings. All at the same time, we're gaining, we're learning. So it's kind of a balance of both. I'm excited. I get to share with staff later in grades 3, 4, and 5 about interim assessments. I dove into it this summer, and, and it's just more work for us, but it's going to make the work we do better and a little more meaningful. We have building leadership teams, continued PD, and we walk through. I walk through, teaching and learning department walks through, peers walk through peers' classrooms. We've opened that up with having a TOSS and stuff to do that, but it's been very intentional, our work on that. And our staff is working on identifying how our new curriculum and practices that we're using, and working with teaching and learning to have that continuous improvement and to keep that line going up and up. Math. Again, we've had great growth in the last four years, but we want, we want to do better, right? So we have those things I mentioned before. I can get into that more, but we, we adjusted our math time from 45 minutes to 75 minutes. So really, our schedule, when you look at it, is chock full of core, core subjects. So we keep moving that up. We're looking at how our small group practice is done, diving into our Ready Math curriculum and supporting students and, and staff, right? So it isn't just supporting the students, but it's supporting staff and how we do things and how we have that collective teacher efficacy. All right. Science. I really like this one, one because the graph, you know, is, looks good. But I really like this one because it's a 5th grade assessment, and you go, man, my 5th grade teachers are awesome. And they are, but it's also my 4th grade teachers. It's my 3rd grade teachers. It's my 2nd grade teachers. It's the 1st grade teachers. It's, yes, it's kindergarten teachers, right? It's, and probably the PK and the parents at home. But we're able to do that because of that focus intentionality, right? We are really working to make sure we have science. It's there when we're supposed to teach it. We devote 45 minutes to it. So that our kids are doing better. Right now, I feel really great about where we're at. But again, I always have that caveat, Dr. Weber and I, you know, that, you know, we still got 65% not where we want it to be yet. So we're going to continue to work, and that just means we have to look at how we're doing things still and make more time for it. All right. Now we have some fun stuff. This will be our third year for Reading Under the Lights. It's actually this Friday, and now I have to have some formative assessment. When is it? Friday, that's right, and you're invited. I just want to make sure it's Reading Under the Lights. It's at Legion Field, Champion Car Wash Field. From 5:30 to 6:00, we're going to have some pizza. From 6:00 to 7:00, kids spread out blankets. We have a lot of our RHS sports teams and UCC helping us, the athletes read, the kids, the parents read together. And really, it's just to celebrate literacy. It's a time when we make reading important. We get to be under the lights on a turf field, and it's really enjoyable. And we know it's not going to rain. It is not raining. It's kind of like Otzen. There's no rain at Champion Car Wash Field on Friday night. But we're all in base, and the high schools jumping in. We're going to have the football team there. We're going to have the cheer. I know, I think maybe basketball, girls soccer, softball. We have the UCC baseball team. So it is, it's a great, great event, and we hope to make it bigger. We've got five schools participating this year. It started off with us. Last year, we had three schools. Now we've got five schools working on it. All right. Now the playground. We keep working on that. Pea gravel's gone on this playground over here. Some of you have got to see it. We've got quality-approved woodchips with no splinters. Jared was explicit about that, no splinters. But, and thank you Tracy, his crew, Eddie worked really hard, the paint crew. We've got new stripes out there, so it looks definitely better. But I always love this. It's like a Ginsu knife commercial, but wait. Next slide. We have renditions of two different playgrounds. So in the six years we've been here, we've managed to cobble a little bit of money together, about $25,000. Each one of those structures is about $50,000. We do want to make sure that the playground company installs it, so that way, we've got it installed to the caliber of, that, that it was devised for. So we hope this year, we might be able to get to the point where we install one of them. We're going to install on the 4th and 5th grade side first, and then we're going to work to the second one and have that installed on the K3 side to give our kids a little bit, something more. And we wanted to kind of work on that and do our part for helping lead this community. But we're excited about that. So when you see our fundraisers and such, we've got Boo Grams, where we sell little holiday tags for the ragtag necklaces. You know, you pay a dollar. We have Jog-a-thon. We have a Penny Wars. Lots of different things this year. To no candy bars. No candy bars. But it'll be, it'll be fun, and we're looking forward to it. And I will tell you, the Penny Wars, when kids bring in bricks of pennies, you know, they buy the pennies from the bank. The bank loves us. They love us. Sorry, any bankers out here. All right. And then one last thing. I wanted to thank you guys, but also make a difference. Chelsea's been great of getting us. But Chelsea did a great job of hooking us up. On October 25th, I didn't get this in, from 9:30 to 12:30, we're going to have a beautification day on a Saturday, spend three hours making our planters look better. Again, so I'm, I'm excited for that. But really, thank you to directors, Leone, Bishop, Mr. Cubic, Mr. Cotton, Hammerson, Minor, and Ms. Kremets. We're shining the slope, and we're, we're excited to be here. So any questions that you may have, I'd be happy to answer.
I wonder, Dan, is, was there any curriculum change in the math?
Uh, no.
Who scores?
No. Since I've been here for six years, we've been on Ready Math, but I will tell you, sometimes it's hard to make sure when hiring processes happen, how do we train new staff and stuff? So it's really examining those processes of what we're doing. How do I make my intake better for teachers to bring their level up? And then how do we get teachers to see other teachers' classrooms, right? Because we have some great instructors here. How do I make time for those peer observations and stuff? So they go, Mr. Leone's doing a pretty good thing over there. I want to copy what Mr. Leone's doing. Mr. Bishop's doing, Dr. Bishop's doing a great thing over there. How do I copy those things? So we're really opening up, and, and that's where we reflect on our current practice, to make our positions better inside the building. Along with, I mean, teaching and learning, it's a lift for all of us, so.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions, comments? Director Kremets?
The interim assessment blocks. You said that's an additional assessment?
Yes. So the interim assessment block is, I wouldn't say it's brand-new to ODE, Oregon Department of Education. It is brand-new to me. Learned about it this summer, and what it does is, we always take these state tests in grades 3, 4, 5, and then higher grades above. What this does is allows us to look at one little learning block and say, hey, learning block, what do you really want us to do, right? So we can have our kids take that one little piece, like one or two questions, and then it allows us to see the question. So usually on the state test, our teachers, our instructors don't get to see that, and see where our students succeeded and see where our students didn't succeed. And so we're opening that up and using that this, this year to inform our practice of what is that test really asking? How does it need to be answered? And how do we get better at that? Did I do okay, Ms., Dr. Weber? Okay. Yes.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions, comments? Thank you so much, Principal Endicott, for, for hosting this, the beautiful artwork, the kids singing. It's just been a treat. Thank you very much.
Community out here. Thank you very much.
And Principal Endicott was, you know, referring to Dr. Jill Weber. She is our Director of Teaching and Learning, and she has a report for us. We're excited to hear this. Take it away, Jill.
Yes, absolutely. And so following Dan is great because talked a lot about the work we're doing and student success. And so I want to thank you for the opportunity to give you a short update about where we are and see some of the things that have been happening and how our students are growing and learning. So Dan shared some things from his school. We're going to kind of look at a bigger picture of the district. Next slide, please. So as you know, the OSAS scores were just released, and those OSAS scores give us one measure of how students are doing. And it's a moment of time, and it's kind of summative at the end of the year. What we also, though, want to look at is that measurement of growth, that our students are making growth towards that proficiency level. And we know after, after COVID, we're growing and growing and growing, and that's the part we're really looking at. There's a benchmark we want to reach, but we also are monitoring how close they continue to get to that benchmark and how much they're growing. As Dan also mentioned, there's amount, we do assessments all the time, PK through 12. The interim block is one way that we can do some measures, but we also do reading measures three times a year, kindergarten all the way through senior year of high school. And we're measuring that growth along the way. We respond to that data along the way. Teachers are analyzing that. This week, I've been in a couple of meetings in elementary schools where they're digging into the data, identifying student strengths, identifying where they need to target that instruction to ensure students are meeting the goals we have set to be strong readers by the time they, they leave our system. And I'm excited to share with you just how much we're catching up and how much we're getting closer to that, that goal. Even when students first come in kindergarten, we look at their pre-reading skills. And our students across our district, four out of five, are a bit behind on their pre-reading skills, and we are working hard to catch them up so that they can enter, especially at the end of 2nd grade. We want them to be proficient readers entering 3rd grade strong, and so we continue to move towards that. Next slide, please. So thank you, Board, for your support in all the things we're doing in teaching and learning. I want to thank the, the principals and the teachers for how hard they're working. It takes all of us working together to support all of our students in reaching these goals. So I want to just say that upfront. Dan mentioned how hard the, the staff is working in Sunny Slope, and we see that in every school right now, and I couldn't be filled with more gratitude for how hard they're working, the difference they're making for our kids and our community. The kids are a treasure, and the work they're doing is, is making that, that happen. Each year, we look at our integrated guidance, and that is a, it's a, it's a application process, I guess I'll say, or it's a report we give based on our federal government's grants that they give us. We integrate these together and, and set some goals that from, with ODE that show the steps that we need to make when we receive these funds. The purpose of it is to align those resources we get together, and everything from Perkins Grants to early literacy, title grants, all of that together, and we set goals from that. So part of that process is that we're working with ODE and setting those goals. So they have to approve. These have to be rigorous goals enough for them to approve. So Michelle was pretty excited when she came in this fall and said, we're doing, we're showing the growth in our students. We're meeting those goals. So the goals that ODE asks us to set are the four-year graduation, the five-year cohort completion rate, 9th grade on track, regular attendance, and 3rd grade ELA. And we know that the four-year cohort grad, the five-year cohort completion, and 9th grade on track seem like those are all high school goals. But Mr. Vickery would tell you, it's not just the 12th grade or 9th grade, or just the high school. It's everything from kindergarten all the way up. How hard every teacher is working to get them there? And the goals that we set, we are showing, we've not only met them, but we've exceeded in all the areas. But we are .5 off in one little area, but we are going to continue to work towards that. So pretty proud of that, that we have met those rigorous goals. Next slide. The other thing that will, in November, some additional information around our OSAS scores will be released, and that is around the growth. So what we just was, what, what was just released is the percentage of students who met certain benchmarks. But we're going to see some information coming out in November, more about those details, and I want to give you a little preview on that. That nine of our 11 schools are showing at least one Level 5 growth indicator, and that Level 5 is the highest growth indicator you can get. So that, that we're seeing nine of 11 of our schools are having at least one of those. That, we're pretty proud of that. And the key areas that we're showing that biggest growth in is students in poverty, which is an important group that we, we want to ensure that are receiving that support. Students in disability, with disabilities, again, that's an important area. And then underserved race and ethnicity, another important one. So those are those key target areas we're seeing some big growth in. So I'm very excited about that. And I want to highlight a few schools that we're seeing multiple areas of this happening, and that is Eastwood, Green, Fullerton, Sunny Slope, and Melrose are showing a lot of Level 5 growth in those areas, and that's from all that hard work of the team coming together. So this, we'll, we'll talk more curriculum instruction committee around data, but I want to give you this preview that our, our staff are working hard, our students are working hard, our leaders are working hard, and together, our kids are doing some great stuff. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for that report. Yay.
Yay.
Yeah. Awesome. And now, we have our Roseburg High School Student Leadership Report. We have Janelle Melling and Ryan Wilson. Take it away, guys.
Hello, hello. Okay, epic. Thank you very much for having us here tonight. We're, it's pretty busy right now. We've got Homecoming next week, and just a whole bunch of things are flying around. So we're super excited to share what's happening.
Ryan said, oh, there we go. As Ryan said, Homecoming is the biggest thing that we've been working on. We're in full swing, and all of our activity and all of our, most of our hard work is going towards Homecoming right now. Our theme for this year is fabulous, fabulous Las Vegas. Our dance is going to be from 7 o'clock to 10 o'clock PM in the Roseburg High School Student Center on the 18th of October. Our decorations for the dance are going to focus on a blend of classic Vegas colors, like red and black, along with the shining lights of the strip and sparkles and sequins. We're excited for that.
And it's not just the dance. Our Spirit Week is going to be very exciting as well. We have a full week of dress-up days planned out and lunchtime activities, and this runs from the 13th to the 17th of October. A couple of our lunchtime games include Kahoot, which Joe Latham right now is working on making it Las Vegas-themed, and other simple games like ring toss. And some of the dress-up days include really just more of that Vegas, just, you know, theme where we have, we, we took, we've done twin days before where it was just, you know, you dress with the same, same outfit as a buddy, and we called that pair of aces. So kind of some improvising with that one, too. And there's also like a totally new one we've created. It's called Poker Face, where students wear red, black stripes, and just that sort of, you know, celebrity kind of vibe. And then Mrs. Bartlett also suggested, too, that, that we throw in the Bum Squad student section theme on Friday, which is construction zone. So like, you know, Roseburg High School orange, that kids just wear that to school as well, so.
In addition, our Powderpuff game will be held on the 16th of October at 5:30 PM on Finley Field. We have three teams organized, a freshman team, a sophomore and junior team combined, and then seniors, and practices are already underway, happening on Tuesdays and Thursdays. That's going well.
And today, we had voting for our Homecoming Court. That's across all grade, excuse me. There's princes and princesses for the freshman, sophomore, and junior grade levels, and then there's a whole court for the seniors. And everyone voted on those today, either in their advisory class, or seniors did it in their government class, which is required because during advisory today for seniors, we all wore white out, and we went on to Finley Field, and we spelled out 26 and took our class photo. So that was, that was pretty awesome. And then, you know about coins for cancer? Are we doing that this year? So we are running back this fundraiser for the Community Cancer Center, where, you know, members of the Homecoming Court don't just sit there and look pretty. There's sort of like a competition where throughout the duration of Homecoming Week, the court tries to raise as much money as possible, just to donate, you know, typically through coins. But you know, some cash sneaks in there as well. Some kids carrying bands as they go throughout their day. And then, yeah, last year, it was, it was, it was really awesome. So we decided to do it again this year.
Other news, next week, testing is also happening on the 15th, the PSAT for juniors, and then the ASVAB for seniors.
And then as for clubs, most clubs on campus are pretty much started now. And then as for clubs, most clubs on campus are pretty much started now. We're getting into October, and we just wanted to shout out a couple of just organizations, clubs that have been doing awesome things. If you were at Blocktoberfest this last Saturday, you might have seen Roseburg High School Vocal Fusion and some of the theater kids. They got the chance to, on the family stage, perform solo songs or sing as a duet, and it was, it was really cool to see.
Our environmentalist club, the Green Team, on campus has begun working on building planter boxes for the RHS Community Garden, and those are expected to be completed by the end of the year with the help of Roseburg High School Woodshop. So that's going good.
Then there are, as always, some new clubs on campus this year. There is the Travel Club, which does, it's through, I forget what EF, I think it's Education First, that's the organization, and it is just straight up like kids get together, fundraise to go take cool trips and see different parts of the world. So that's a formal club now. And then there's also a Finance and Investing Club, but they like to go by Wall Street Warriors, which is pretty awesome. And I think, I remember that there was, I hear something about, this doesn't apply to us, Class of 2026, but financial literacy or a class on finances is now required to graduate from Roseburg High School. So I think it's cool that, you know, teach our kids how to pay those gosh darn taxes and things like that.
The Leadership Executive Council will also be meeting soon to discuss first semester grant opportunities where student-led clubs on campus can apply for grant money to assist in reaching their club goals. And these grants are sponsored by leadership. And then we also had an idea that a couple of students proposed to us that we're going to be discussing an executive council about having a haunted house coming up in Heritage Building possibly. So that's just an idea for now, but we're going to be discussing that in Heritage and with admin and everything.
100%. And then for sports and athletics, OSA, marching band has been killing it this year. They got first place at their first comp in Hillsborough last month. And then this Saturday, they're going to attend their second competition. It's a cool name. It's called Pride of the Northwest in Grants Pass. And so, yeah, they're, and they're always showing up at the Friday Night Lights games, and so they've been absolutely killing it.
Cross Country has also been doing really amazing. There are a bunch of meets coming up in October, like the Rose City Invite in Portland, which is a race held on a golf course, which is cool. And the Umpqua Invite in Stewart Park is happening in a couple of weeks. So they're doing great.
As for football, our Homecoming game will be against South Eugene, and that'll be on next Friday, the 17th. And then I believe, is there a senior night on Halloween? And that's against Springfield, so I feel like the season absolutely flew by. It's like, oh my gosh, we've only got two more games left of our senior year. It's crazy.
Our volleyball team has gone away today to North Medford. There's a huge attendance last week at the Pinkout game against Grants Pass. So we're hoping to increase our Bum Squad attendance for volleyball games.
Yeah, 100%. And then, boy, soccer played North Medford at home last night, and they got the W, so that's pretty awesome. And then girls soccer played North Medford away Monday night, and the game was a 0-0 tie, which is, I think that's kind of crazy.
And that's all we have for you guys if there's any questions. But we're looking forward to sharing you, with you again next month. Thank you.
Great job. Awesome, as always. I do have one quick question. So if I were a betting woman, who, who would I bet to win Powder Puff this year?
Definitely the seniors.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
We do have a student from Germany who is, I believe she's the quarterback for the sophomore and juniors team, who actually has like, you know, played American football. And so, I don't know, like, state, like, it's not just rigged with the seniors. Like, there's, there's some competition, so.
Oh, wow. Thank you so much. And right now, we have our recognition for our students and our teachers. And I just want to quickly say, all of the award winners, when we're finished, we ask that you come forward and have a group picture with the board. So right now, Director Krimmets is going to be presenting our student awards.
Am I on? Okay. Well, this is one of the Board's really favorite parts, is we get to really acknowledge what great students that we have. Because we do this, all of the service that we do on the Board is for you kids. And we just love to express that and, and honor a few of you that are really standing out. So tonight, starting right here at Sunny Slope, Hunter Smith. Come on down. He has something special for you. If you'll stand right here by me here. Let me tell you a little bit about Hunter. He is a bright, kind, and hard-working fifth grader at Sunny.
Director Krimmets, I hate to interrupt you, but could we have his family and teachers come join him?
Come on up. Any family. Come on up. Teachers, come on up. As you can see, Hunter here shines brightly. Look at all of your, all of your friends here and teachers. Well, he greets his staff with a smile, a compliment, or a handshake each day, spreading his positivity throughout the whole school. Hunter is always helpful, taking on tasks that support our whole community, and he consistently goes above and beyond for other people. His upbeat attitude, love for learning, especially math, and his special affinity for bridges show his extraordinary curiosity. Since kindergarten, Hunter has been a shining example of kindness, respect, and leadership, making Sunny Slope a better place for both students and staff. Congratulations, Hunter. All right, we're going to get a picture right there.
Stay here, buddy.
Right here. Front and center. Hey, Hunter. Now we want to honor an eighth-grade student from Jolene, Eden Barton. Family and teachers that might be here, come on up. Hey, Eden is not only an incredible musician, singer, actress, she's an exemplary student and natural leader. But she's also kind, and her kindness towards others is her most powerful asset. She's hardworking, dedicated, and a huge support for those around her. Her presence is a light, and her energy is infectious. And her kindness, respect, and talent shine every day. As one teacher shared, she is that person who teaches others kindness by being a kind example. Eden stays focused, works with positive energy, and always helps others. She's truly a wonderful student whose light inspires everyone around her. Thank you for being so great, Eden. Congratulations. We're moving on up to the high school, and we have a couple of high school students. Evy Sears, 11th grade. Evy is such a warm, positive person, curiosity to every space she enters. She's in both concert and in marching band, and she shines as a thoughtful, hard-working musician who uplifts those around her. In class discussions, she's often the first to raise her hand, and she shares eloquent insights and listening deeply to other, other people's perspectives. Outside the classroom, her kind greeting and genuine interest in people brighten always and makes all the others feel seen. She's deeply curious about the world and the way people think, and she challenges that curiosity into service and encouragement for her peers. You're a pretty awesome person there. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Are you gonna, is this Calvin? All right. I'm thinking you might be related. This is Calvin, a brother, and he's in 12th grade, so one step ahead here. But together, you're quite a family. That's great. Calvin is, is a consistently calm, focused, and positive presence in all of his classes. He's never afraid to try new things, and he recently transitioned from tenor sax to percussion and is excelling with determination and skill. He strives a great balance, or he strikes a great balance between being serious and attentive, while still knowing how to laugh and enjoy the process with his peers. Calvin's hard-working nature, thoughtful questions, and kind demeanor make him a role model for others. Calvin's positivity and good attitude inspire those around him to do their best. Congratulations, Calvin. That's, that's, that's your.
I wish you guys could see what I see, standing or sitting up here during these awards. Everybody is beaming. There's such joy and smiles. It's great. So the next person that we want to honor is a teacher. And it's a kindergarten teacher from Sunny Slope, Michelle Meyer. So come on up. Family, family, coworkers, everybody. Okay, Sunny Slope Elementary proudly recognizes Mrs. Michelle Meyer with the Crystal Apple Award. Bringing valuable experience from private school, she first served as an instructional assistant before working hard to become licensed. Michelle has been a rock star teacher ever since. Last year, as a brand-new kindergarten teacher, she stepped in with courage and immediately shined. She has never let challenges stop her from serving students with joy, resilience, and heart. Mrs. Meyer is admired for her dedication, positivity, and commitment to Sunny Slope students, making her truly deserving of this recognition. And her crystal apple reads, resilient, dedicated, compassionate, joyful, inspiring rock star. Congratulations, Michelle. Squeeze on over. And I would encourage you, Sunny Slope people, to stay up here for the next one. Okay, the next one we're going to honor is an Instructional Assistant III in the Specialized Support Center, Amanda Woodson. So Mandy Woodson is a shining star at Sunny Slope Elementary who brings 100% every single day. She greets kids with smiles, hugs, and the kind of aloha spirit you'd expect our hallways open to, you'd expect if our hallways opened to the beaches of Hawaii. Mandy has a specialty skill set that sets her reach, that helps her reach students who need the most intensive support, always with patience and compassion. She's quick to lend a hand, sometimes dropping everything to help a child in need, surfboard not included. Mandy's kindness, humor, and willingness to go the extra mile make her truly irreplaceable in our school family. And her crystal apple reads, kind, helpful, dedicated, skilled, joyful, aloha. Congratulations, Mandy. Okay, would all of, all of the recipients of awards, would you come forward so that we can have a photograph with our Board of Directors? And just also while, while we're congregating here, we will take a brief recess after this so that those of you who want to stay for the remainder of the meeting can, and that others could go. Okay, so we will take a brief recess for those who are not wanting to stay for the rest of the meeting. If you are wanting to stay and you're wanting to speak, you will need to fill out a public participation card right now. And there will probably be seats that will open up here, so please come and take them as they open up. I'll let you know when we start in a few minutes. I'll let you know when we start in a few minutes. We will resume the meeting. At this time, we will enter into public participation. So, but I would like to remind everyone in the audience of our rules about public participation. The board has allotted 20 minutes to hear public comments, and each speaker will have up to three minutes to share. Those interested in speaking must fill out which, a public participation card, which you did already, so that's taken care of. But I would like to remind everyone that public participation is a time for the board to hear the community. It's not a time for the board to hold discussion with community members, so we will be listening. We won't be asking questions or dialoguing. Community members are always welcome to email board members, and our contact information can be found on the district website. Because we know some community members here tonight are to speak- they're here to speak about the student privacy at RHS, and I would like to share a brief statement. Roseburg Schools is committed to providing safe, respectful learning environments for every student. We have received questions about student privacy in restrooms and locker rooms, particularly related to transgender students. Oregon law protects transgender students' rights to use facilities that align with their gender identity. At the same time, we offer private or gender-neutral options for any student who prefers them. Our staff work directly with the students and families to support individual needs and ensure everyone's dignity and privacy. We know these conversations can feel deeply personal and sometimes difficult. Our role as a school district is clear: to support the safety, well-being, and success of every student we serve while upholding the law. Assistant Superintendent Michelle Nie will explain the process, including how to raise your hand if participating via Zoom and utilize a timer to maintain the three minutes allotted per participant. Input can be provided via email to the district and board as well, and we value input from our community members. This is important. While speakers may offer objective criticism of operations and programs, the board will not hear personal complaints concerning district personnel nor against any person connected with the school system, including students or staff. Michelle?
Thank you, Chair Minor. Just to let you know, I will call the first person up, and then I will announce who is on deck. So please be prepared to come up when it is your turn. The timer will start when you start speaking. When it goes off at three minutes, please conclude your comments so the next person can come up, as we only have 20 minutes for our comments, so that makes sure that leaves time for others to have their time as well. So first up, we have Clay Tellman, and on deck, we will have Sean Beer.
Good evening to the board and to the community members. I just want to tell you, I've been in prayer for all of you. You guys are in the hot seat. I'm a marriage and family therapist. I've been one since 97. I moved here in 97, worked for Adapt as a family therapist. I worked at Douglas County Mental Health as a school-based family therapist, and I've been a child development specialist in South Oakwood School District. I've worked with youth and families for 50-plus years. I'm 70 this year, so I've been doing it all of my adult life. We cannot ignore the role of social media and the COVID lockdowns on our youth and the impact it's had. You guys have been dealing with that directly for the last few years, and we know our youth are in trouble, and we're trying to help them recover. Tonight, we're here because of biological male using the girls' locker room, a policy based on Oregon's inclusive guidelines in House Bill 2002, which codified that. And I understand the unease of this causes for many parents and students, particularly regarding girls' privacy. I want to assure you that emerging medical and legal developments support your concerns, and changes are on the horizon to ensure that all students feel safe while affirming same-sex facility rights. In 2024, the Cass review, a landmark UK study discredited the World Professional Association for Transgender Health Standards and their Standards of Care Number Eight, which underpin the general affirming care and policies like House Bill 2002. It found remarkably weak evidence from medical interventions. I can provide citations on everything. Medical interventions like puberty blockers, with risks outweighing unproven benefits for minors. Countries like the UK, Finland, Sweden, have banned these treatments for youth, rejecting WPATH guidelines as unscientific. The American Psychiatric Association, American Academy of Pediatricians, and the American Medical Association's endorsements are increasingly at odds with European caution, highlighting a need for the DSM to reassess its criteria in light of emerging data on desistants, regret, and non-medical drivers of dysphoria. Legally, the US Supreme Court is addressing this in West Virginia versus PBJ, with arguments in December 2025 and a ruling by July 26. Experts estimate a 70-80% chance the court will uphold the state bans on males and females spaces, citing privacy and fairness as seen in USV scheming. There's a federal probe right now on Title 19 in Portland and a 2025 lawsuit by athletes prioritizing girls' privacy. These could overturn HB 2002's framework, aligning Oregon with 26 other states enforcing it. We are all here committed to a safe, inclusive environment for every single kid. The growing medical and legal consensus supports protecting girls' privacy in same-sex facilities while compassionately addressing all students' needs. What happened in the Newburgh School, pay attention to what happened to their board. Our board is under fire. They need our support and they need our prayers. I'm speaking that to every person in the room. We have to support these people. This school board cannot change the law. You do. We do. This has to go to Salem.
On deck, we will have Shannon Miller.
Hello, board. Uh, I've heard good things about most of you, and I know you're in a tight spot because you're under the state's control. And uh, you know, you can only do so much, or you lose funding, or you kind of lose possibly your positions and jobs. But on the other hand, the community has a voice also, and uh, you know, if you don't listen to those voices in the community, you know, bad things can start to happen. I should have written all this down, but I'm gonna save my time for the next few speakers. Thank you.
Shannon Miller is next, and on deck is Bob Moore.
Thank you guys all for having us and letting us speak. I'm gonna read a letter from a student that doesn't want to come up and shriek in front of everyone because they are afraid of repercussions from your admin at Roseburg High, and they made that pretty clear, that they felt the need to scare children today about the walkout. She is a student at RHS who was in the locker room when the male is in there as well. She thinks it's wrong because he is biologically a male. On a daily basis, she wears jeans and a nice shirt. She said she doesn't want to go to weight training dressed like that, although some people do. She cares about her grades and her appearance. A male in the locker room shall never be an excuse to have her grade be dropped. This is not her asking for extra time to get dressed, being able to leave class early, or the male to have those accommodations either. This is her speaking her opinion on why this is wrong. Whatever parts you have, male or female, you go in the right locker room or bathroom. You should not have special accommodation. When girls are in the locker room, this male is always a topic of conversation. Why are teenagers talking about this topic? Why are teenagers changing genders when their brains aren't fully developed? Why is it that grown adults keep putting young girls in one of the most awkward, uncomfortable, unbearable situations? If she can't even hold a guy's hand because she is too scared, then having a guy be in a locker room watching her dress in a bra and underwear scares her even more. And I'll move on to some of my stuff. First of all, I want to say I want all kids to be safe, whether they're boys, girls, transgender, whatever they identify as, with that. You have girls at Roseburg High that are asking other boys at school to protect them and stand in front of the locker room door so that they can get dressed safely. That is absurd. They are mandated to be there, and they should be able to feel safe and not have to have an older brother or friend protect the door so that they can feel safe. Why do 50 girls need to request a private bathroom to feel safe when there's very few that are transgender at our school? One transgender student in particular is using the private bathrooms or the gender-neutral bathrooms. I was told that they were addressed by the school admin, and they are doing that. Another one is choosing not to. And the one that is choosing not to also has bracelets up and down his arms that say, "I love boobs." And no, it's not just for the month of October. It has been since the first day of school. Also, voices that he is attracted to girls, which makes, as you can feel, other girls very uncomfortable. You guys had a cisgender boy who identifies as what he was born as, followed into a bathroom by one of your teachers or AIs, I'm not exactly sure. He was accused of being a girl and told to get out. Why is one teacher protecting the boys, but you have no one in there to protect the girls to keep the boy out of the girls' locker room? Your gender-neutral bathrooms are not labeled. I was told by admin that they are the bathrooms in the- Also, you shouldn't be taking coming away from your student.
All right, next up, we have Bob Moore and Cyrus Stratton. You are on deck.
I appreciate you all being here and being on the school board meeting and everything. I'm speaking on behalf of my daughter. She's homesick right now. She sent me a letter on some things that are going on at RHS. She's a freshman this year. But she, I was just gonna read from what she said. Boys should not be in the girls' locker rooms or bathrooms. It is uncomfortable and inappropriate, and they should not allow it. Girls should not be in a position to where there is a chance where they might see body- boy body parts, and it's something that they shouldn't be looking at. Just recently, my daughter had also said that she ended up into going to a girl's bathroom, and there was a boy in there, and so she had ended up- she asked kindly if he could leave, and there was no response on that. So she ended up leaving from that bathroom and going to another one because she just doesn't want to take a chance of something might happen or something bad might happen to her. Anyway, thank you.
Next up, we have Cyrus Stratton. And if there's anyone online, please use the raise your hand function if you are interested in speaking.
Good. Okay. I want to start by saying, like, I'm very proud of our community to have around 60 students I've seen online come out and voice their opinion, whether they're pro having this kid and he learns bathroom or against it. That's great. I think it's great that our school is encouraging students to go up and voice their opinions and exercise their rights. That's a great thing. To me, I'm not a woman. I personally don't understand the fear of having another man follow me anywhere and someone that should be private. In my opinion, it's changed a lot throughout the day, and from multiple people, I've heard multiple sides about this. But I'm still surprised. From what I can tell and from what I've heard, this has all been based to a rumor that I have, that has stopped at multiple sources. I've heard most people say it, but no one can say who started it. And if this is a serious thing, if someone is seriously doing the acts that were described in the rumor, it should be a punishment inflicted on that student rather than the general population of transgender kids. Being, doing acts of sexual deviance is not unique to transgender people. And according to NIH, the percentage of people who make sexually deviant acts are the same whether you are trans or in the general population. We should not be punishing one group because of the acts of one person. I mean, sure, this is a spread issue, but I mean, you shouldn't judge the majority based off the minority. However, I want the girls at our school to be safe. I want them to feel safe. And whether that's making the current transgender person have their own private bathroom to go through, that may be the right action, because in the end, it is majority pain versus a minority joy. And in the end, I want as many people as can to be happy about this. So whatever the right course is sermoned by the board, I feel like you guys will figure it out in the best way possible. That's all I have.
We have two individuals online. So next up, we'll have Andrea Schuman, and Kelsey will be on deck.
Hello. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Uh, great. I am a parent of a kid at Hugh Crest, and I heard that this meeting was happening tonight, and I just wanted to voice my support for the children that are at the school that are different than the other kids. I hear a lot of voices clutching a lot of pearls around this one individual student who I don't know, and I don't know their particular history. But I do know that the vast majority of assaults happen from cis men to cis women or cis men to trans women. So the statistics don't really follow that you're coming after one single individual as a predator. If this specific individual has predator tendencies, that is a totally different thing, but you can't pin that on the entire population. That's insane. Also, nobody's saying anything about transgendered males, you know. Are they safe in the males' locker room? Are they safe in the females' locker room? Do the females feel safe with transgendered males in the locker room? You're getting so twisted. It's really silly. We are an underfunded school system. What you need to worry about is the fact that kids have to hold car washes to pay for basic things, that we need to raise our literacy. The teachers, the educators here, they know what's really important. The people on the school board, they know what's really important. They do not want to be adjudicating, you know, what is a ridiculous- They do not want to be adjudicating, you know, what is a ridiculous, you know, war, person to person, instead of realizing what the real problems are, which is we have a Department of Education that is being torn apart at the federal level. We have deep, deep underfunding of our schools in Oregon. And therefore, we cannot provide them with the things the teachers so desperately want to provide them. In fact, every teacher I know goes into their own pockets to go buy supplies for their children because they love what they do. They sacrifice an enormous amount of money, amount of time, to be able to be teachers. And then you guys bully a child in high school who doesn't assume their gender the way you do. It's time for the adults to grow up a little bit and start looking at children as children and stop teaching their children to hate other children because by and large, trans women are not assaulting cis women. Any day of the week, put me in a bathroom with a trans woman. She's probably going to help me do my eyeliner and tell me my dress is nice. Just move on. Just get a life. Just leave people alone and let the educators do what they need to do. I see the rest of my time. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Kelsey. Kelsey, could you please state your full name so we have it for the record?
Hi, yeah, my name is Kelsey Leach, and I have two children at Winchester Elementary. I am also here to be a voice of support of trans students and their right to use whatever locker room and bathroom they're most comfortable in. Trans students are in fact reported to be bullied and harassed and sexually assaulted at higher rates than their cis peers. The data is actually showing that 43% of trans students have dealt with these issues compared to 18% of their cis peers, with a staggering 29% of trans students having attempted suicide. So I am more concerned with those rates than the fact that some people are uncomfortable in a bathroom with them. They also have the right to use a gender neutral bathroom if they're uncomfortable. The fact is, trans kids are not the perpetrators of harassment, but are often the victims of it. And often from kids with parents such as the ones here rallying against them because they don't know what it's like to live in someone else's shoes for one day. I support Oregon State's laws that require students to be able to use the facility of their choice. And I'm also horrified by the prospect of anyone here proposing that we police children's bodies to make sure that they match the facility they're allowed to use and enter. That's all I have to say, so I see the rest of my time, too. Thank you.
We do have one more comment card. We do have a few minutes left. Are you good with that? Okay. Stephanie? Can you please state your name for us? I don't have your card in front of me.
And I just wanted to state a few couple, couple of things that I think that for the most part, those who stand with me are in agreeance of. And it's just that we want everyone who has the same body parts in the same spaces. I feel like that's just kind of common sense. And also, I had just an idea that, you know, brothers and sisters, as they're growing up, they're okay to be sharing a same room until they're a certain age. But once they get to a certain age, it's pretty common that they would no longer share the same room. And that, that seems like common sense. So I'm confused why strangers in a school are allowed to do the opposite. Thank you. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you to everyone who shared tonight. Thank you for the kindness that you've shown to each other and the civility. I thank you that, for that. Your voices are important, and we believe that we share a common commitment of wanting the best for our students. As a board, we have an obligation and responsibility to uphold Oregon laws. Whether we agree or disagree with the laws, we must implement them while continuing to strive to provide safe, supportive schools for every child. Thank you for your comments. We are now going to enter into the business portion. Superintendent Corden, would you please do the review of the agenda and communications to the board?
Will do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate that. In terms of the review of the agenda, we do have one additional, two additional items. One, retirement, that's been recently added to the consent agenda. And we have added a new item. It's item number two on your agenda. That is a fencing proposal for Fremont Middle School. And that proposal can be found on pages 36 to 41 of your packet. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we'll, we'll take just a few minutes, pause for just a few minutes. For the people that want to leave, to leave. Okay, thank you. We will enter into item number one. The consent agenda. Okay, I think most of the people that are here are familiar with this process. We, in accordance with policy and past, past, past practice, the board acts on all items at once unless we come together or someone says, no, they want to act on something differently. So in our consent agenda, for consideration of this meeting, are the committee meetings from AMP, Building and Sites, Curriculum and Instruction Policy, and Student Services, along with gifts to the district, and minutes from the September 17th board meeting, board meeting. Your, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I will make the motion to do that.
Second, sorry.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous, motion carries. Okay, item number two. We have the Fremont Middle School fencing, and that's in pages 36 through 41. And you'll find a memo from Director of Finance and Operations, Danielle Littlefield, pertaining to the needed fencing. So Danielle, would you just maybe talk a little bit about this? This was an issue that we brought up just recently.
Yes, so we have that portion left at Fremont that hasn't been fenced. And we've been having people and dogs get onto the field where our students are out there. So completing this fencing will then complete the enclosure at Fremont.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve the proposed fencing for Fremont Middle School at a bid cost of $122,900 submitted by Freedom Fence.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, great. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion?
I have just... I'm really thankful this is happening. I, this has been something that I worry about all the times. Yet I'm glad it's getting done, and thank you that, I'm sorry it took. What's happening, but it's only going to get worse, so thank you for doing that.
And I do have a question, excuse me. The funding for this, what is it coming out of and how is that happening?
It comes out of our 404 fund.
Great, thank you. Do we have any other discussion? So we have the question. Ann?
I was just wondering, it went, did we bid or go through the usual process on that?
Yeah, I included that in the memo. So we went out, we, we got three quotes.
Okay.
And then our lowest quote that we have on here is Freedom Fence for the $122,900.
Thank you.
Can I just mention something real quick? So two, two items, just points of clarification on this. Danielle was being very judicious in what she said, but I'm just going to be frank with the board. We've had people that have mental illness that are naked on the campus of Fremont. And we also have kind of a rash of some animals that have found their way, dogs. And some of them are friendly and some of them aren't friendly. And this is a priority, as Director Cotton was saying. The other thing just to mention here is we had a, we have a board-approved major maintenance fund, a 404. This, we didn't really have this specifically, this item specifically budgeted for. And so we, we bring this to the board as an item for you to consider. That will mean there will be some other things we won't do with the funding. But, but finishing the fencing has been a goal of the district and the board. This is part of the project we need to do. Given the fact of some recent things that have happened at the middle school, we prioritize this item from a student safety standpoint.
As soon as this is approved, we'll be calling to get it scheduled.
Thank you for the discussion. I will repeat the motion to approve the proposed fencing for Fremont Middle School at a bid cost of $122,900 submitted by Freedom Fence. So we've had this first, the motion, the second discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number three, we have our required report, which is the Division 22 standards. And that is in your packet on pages 42 to 65. Assistant Superintendent Michelle Nie will be presenting this mandatory annual report.
Thank you, Chair Minor. All right, this is our Division 22 Standards Assurances for the 2425 school year. Division 22 standards are the rules that are adopted by this, well, rules are adopted by the State Board of Education, go into Chapter 581, which is ODE's agency number. There are 26 divisions within the chapter that rules can be assigned to. When rules are assigned to Division 22, they become part of Oregon's standards for elementary and secondary schools. The educational standards that either the Oregon Legislature or the State Board of Education has determined must be met in order to be a standard school district. Compliance with these rules ensures a baseline level of service across the state. The Division 22 standards include over 50 rules. The categories for the rules are high-quality learning experiences, aligned and focused educational systems, engaged partners and communities, safe and inclusive schools, and committed and supportive staff. Compliance with these standards ensures every student in Oregon is provided with that baseline of service. This is just a snapshot of some of the Division 22 rules. There are diploma requirements, instructional materials adoption, the complaint procedures, so our KLAR procedure, teacher and administrator evaluation and support, required instructional time, substance use prevention and intervention plan, as well as every student belongs. The Division 22 standards, it's, every year, the districts are required to report on compliance with each of these standards and include an explanation and corrective action plan for any rule for which the district is out of compliance. For local accountability, we have to report to our local school board by November 1st, which is happening tonight. We have to make the report available on the district website by November 1st. And then we have to submit the assurances to ODE by November 15th. ODE reviews all the submissions and then follows up with districts that have self-reported as being out of compliance. Why? The why for Division 22 Standards Assurances of Compliance, as I shared before, this indicates the floor of the education to be provided to students, not the ceiling. But it also signals our commitment to providing a high-quality educational experience and equitable opportunities for all of our students. What happens if a district is out of compliance? ODE reviews the district's proposed corrective action plan and either approves or rejects it. If it's not approved, then ODE provides technical assistance. And then once you have an approved plan, ODE specialists may continue to provide support. And if the district fails to come back into compliance after an opportunity for corrective action, ODE may withhold a portion of the district's state school fund monies. Our report for the 2425 school year. And there were some waivers for Division 22 for 2425. Essential skills graduation requirements continue to be waived, and that will be through the end of the 2728 school year. As note, though, local performance assessment requirements in Section 2 remain in effect. And also, the essential skill assessments for English language learners, this related policy requirement has also been waived till the end of 2728 school year. The rule revisions in effect for the 2425 school year. So beginning last year, we had to have a planned K-12 instructional program for social and emotional learning and a planned 912 instructional program, including personal finance in higher education and career path skills content standards. So last year, we had to have it planned and ready to go. This year, it had to be implemented. Also, some revisions that were in fact modified diploma, extended diploma, and certificate of attendance. We have to annually provide our parents information about diploma availability and requirements. And then onsite access to all courses is required for a diploma at all high schools. And also, we were, the addition of the substance use prevention and intervention plan, this requires a written comprehensive plan. And it went into effect that it required a minimum of one ODE-provided opioid prevention education lesson in grade six, seven, and eight, and once in high school. And this came from Senate Bill 238 that was passed in 2023. Happy to report that we are in compliance with all Division 22 standards for the 2425 school year. Looking ahead for the 2526 school year, there are some new revised rules and requirements. And added the seed survey as being required with the OSAS component. The seed survey is the survey for students to say how they are feeling and how things are going in schools. ODE collects that information. Parents and students are allowed to opt out of that survey, though, the seed survey.
How often is that survey?
The seed survey happens every year during the same time we do the OSAS assessments. And I'm happy to share the questions and information. It's different from the student health survey. That's a different one that we've discussed previously. We also added the mention of the ALPA screener as a required part of OSAS component. The ALPA screener is for our English language learners, our new students that are coming into our district that English is not their first language. This isn't a new requirement, but it's just making the rule more complete. And then also added clarification that districts must abide by ODE decisions regarding student test records. Also, some new revised rules and requirements that'll be coming for this school year. Educational leadership administrator standards have been updated and, which are currently used by TSPC for administrator licensure. These standards have more specific detailed language and a greater focus on key issues such as equity, talent development, leadership capacity, and instructional leadership. Our districts have to align administrator evaluations to the updated standards by September 30th of 2027. So this is on the horizon. And that is all that I have for Division 22.
I have a question. Can we go back to the seed?
Yes.
So you said that the stu, that the parents could opt out of this? Can the student also opt out, either or?
The student can choose not to take the assessment.
Okay. And the other question is, what grades is this for?
Seed survey is for third grade through 12th grade.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Of third through 12th? And then how long is this test? How long does it last? My guess, my question is, how much instructional time, which is so precious, is being used for this test?
Supposed to be about 15 or 20 minutes for the students to complete it. But it varies depending on the age of the student. I'd be happy to share with you more information. I can get you all of that information about how many questions and everything that's in that. It won't be administered until the spring.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Ann, did you have a question?
Yeah, I would also just like to get a copy of that, too.
Absolutely.
And what time of the year, when do you put this out?
In the spring, the same time we do standardized testing. It's part of the OSAS system.
Oh, it is. Okay. So is it, is it done right incongruent with that?
Yes. The testing window is the same. Yes, so we've had it for many years. But previously, it was optional for districts to provide it or not. Now it has become required. Now it has become required, so.
A question for the new revised rules for administrators. Is this for new administrators, or do all administrators have to go back and take additional courses?
So this is about the standards that, these are the professional standards that they have to show in what they do. So it'll be part of their evaluation process, and they'll need to show that they are meeting those standards. So it'll be for any and all administrators.
They won't be required to go back and take classes or do more work than that in that area?
Just meeting these new standards.
Substance use prevention, is that, is that a one-time?
Yes.
For each grade?
For the grades that are listed there, there are, so we have, ODE has, there are only a very few specific lessons that we are given and required to teach by ODE. So we've talked to you before about the Indian education lessons that are required, and we are given those lessons. Now with the Senate bill, so this was passed by the legislature, there are required substance abuse lessons that we are given from ODE that we are required to teach at those grade levels.
One time, one session, okay, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions? Thank you, Michelle. Now we are moving on to item number four. This is a recommendation for legal counsel services. It's from the AMP minutes, pages twenty-one and twenty-two. Director Bishop, do you want to say anything about this, or does your committee make a recommendation?
Yeah, we met, as a committee, and we went over several proposals for legal counsel. And we discussed this in great detail. And the consensus in the committee was to recommend the school districts retain Miller-Nash for legal services. And I would love, I would love to make that recommendation and.
Are you making the motion?
Yes, make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the selection of Miller-Nash LLP for legal services, subsequent to review of qualifications, is there a second? Director Krimmets seconds it, do we have any discussion?
Just for the record, where are they located?
I don't know, I mean, they're in Portland, but I'm not sure exactly where, yeah, yeah, it's in the metro area.
Also, I would just like for people listening, have we dealt with them, used them in the past?
Recently, we did, they help support the board and district through the charter school renewal process with Phoenix. So that name may be familiar, we worked with JNA, one of the partners in Owen Ash.
Thank you, do we have any other discussion?
I just like, you know, the logistics of our, how we're, what are the logistics going to be because we have an out-of-town legal counsel? How's that going to work? How are we going to, is it going to make people less or more available to us? Does, do we know, did their proposals tell us anything?
Well, I can, I can answer part of it. When, in our dealings with them in the past, they've been extremely responsive and wonderful to work with. Is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, I can just say, we, yeah, I would just echo the fact that when you have a retainer, they work for you. And we feel confident that the turnaround of the service will be, it has been so far with them. They do have an incredible track record of supporting school districts. And one of the things that's been consistent is the service level has been very responsive.
If I could just add too, there was higher cost, but there is also experienced higher efficiency. So there's some savings in the efficiency as opposed to the cost.
Also, I would like to ask Director Bishop, there was a vetting process, wasn't there? As far as the things that you looked at for each one across the board?
Absolutely, absolutely. We had several categories and every proposal was scored. And they were by far, they retained the highest score by not a small margin. They have worked with many school districts of various sizes, big, small. And they've dealt with some very challenging issues in some of the school districts that they've worked with. And I personally was thoroughly impressed with their proposal. We asked several poignant questions, and they answered every one of their questions directly. And not every proposal did that. It was, it was quite impressive, to be honest with you.
Thank you very much, so we, we have the motion, we have the second, we've had discussion, so, all those in favor? We have a unanimous decision, motion carries. I would direct the superintendent to communicate, though, with the two firms of this change. And I believe that would entail that you would bring forth a resolution to the board in the future.
Yeah, our, our current process, because the legal services in July was passed by resolution from the board, our standard process is a sixty-day process, so we will work with our current legal counsel, who's Dol Colwell, and we'll do that immediately following the board's action tonight. That will trigger a sixty-day process to have some completion there. And then expect, the board can expect a new resolution within sixty days to come to the board for official vote.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number five, policy EFA, local wellness for first reading, pages sixty-six through sixty, through seventy-six. So you've had a chance to look at this. I would entertain a motion to approve policy EFA, local wellness, for the first reading as proposed by the policy committee, is there?
I'd move to approve first reading of policy EFA.
Thank you, do we have a second?
That motion?
You have a first, a second, any discussion? Any, I would like to know if there are any comments from Directors Hammerson, Krimmets, or Cubic on this issue? If not, that's great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, unanimous, motion carries. Policy JFCEB, personal electronic devices, this is the first reading. It's on pages seventy-seven through eighty. I will say that during the October third policy committee meeting, this was discussed. And now, I would entertain a motion to approve this policy.
I'll motion to approve the first reading of the personal electronic devices policy.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second that motion.
And I do have discussion.
Great, because I was specifically going to ask you, as chair of that committee, what would you like to say?
So, as we know, this, this one was fairly intense. But I did want to note, there were two essentially typos that were corrected and approved just prior to this meeting with Director Cubic and Director Krimmets. And I, before the meeting today, emailed them to Stephanie, but the board wouldn't be apprised of, of the situation. So if you want me to read those, I can.
I think he needs to, because we need to approve an amended document.
Yes, absolutely.
So yes.
We would need to re-vote on the amended.
We will, I, I would suggest that he read the amendments, and then I'll move for amended.
Thank you.
Sorry, I kind of mucked that up. All right, so first sentence on page two. Personal electronic devices shall be turned, or it's shall silenced and physically out of sight, should be, shall be silenced and physically out of sight. So I mean, it's definitely a typo. So we're just adding the B, BE.
Okay.
Second one is the second sentence of page two. Devices which have the capability to take photographs or record video or audio shall not be used for such purposes while on district, district property or while a student is engaged in district-sponsored activities. The or is being replaced with and, so, you know, it would read, for such purposes while on district property and while a student is engaged in district-sponsored activities.
Thank you.
I'm chair, I would move to amend the motion, which we'll have to vote on first before we vote on the motion as presented by Director Hammerson. And then I'll need a second from the other side of the table.
I'll second that.
Great, all those in favor, is there any discussion about this amendment? Okay.
I just want to thank Keith, because I kind of mucked that up, and he fixed it for me, so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Call for the question on the main motion.
Yes, and now I call for the, the motion to approve the policy JFCEB.
I'll make that motion.
Great.
Prove it.
We have a second as well, any discussion? Okay, great, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Now we're moving on to item number seven, policy IGBAB-JOAR. This is the education records for students with disabilities management. So we did have, the policy was approved for first reading on September seventeenth with no objections received. It is now being presented for second reading and adoption. Would entertain a motion to approve policy IGBAB-JOAR.
I move to approve that policy that you just referenced.
Great.
On second reading.
Is there a second?
I will second that one also.
Wonderful, any discussion? Thank you, all those in favor? Aye, motion carries unanimously. Policy IKF, this is graduation requirements. Again, this one was approved for first reading on September seventeenth, and with no objections received, is now being presented for second reading and adoption. I would entertain a motion to approve policy IKF, which is the graduation requirements.
I'll make the motion to approve second reading and adoption of policy IKF graduation requirements.
Great, is there a second?
I second.
We have a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Item number nine, JHCA, immunization, school sports participation, concussions, and other brain injuries for second reading and adoption. This policy was approved on the September seventeenth, and again, with no objections received, it is now being presented for second reading and adoption. I would entertain a motion to approve policy JHCA, immunization, school sports participation.
Move for approval of policy JHCA, second reading.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Wonderful, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, motion carries unanimously. And then we have number ten, policy J, I see you guys yawning back there. Policy JOA, directory information. This is for, again, this is a second reading, we've had no objections. I would entertain a motion to approve policy JOA, directory information.
I'll make the recommendation we adopt, issue me second reading and adoption of policy JOA directory information.
For the second reading?
For the second reading and adoption.
Great.
And I second it.
We have a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, hey, motion carries. Passed unanimously, we're going to move into committee reports. We have AMP, building insights, curriculum and instruction, policy and student services. Why don't we start with Director Bishop, AMP?
Yes, we met, we, as discussed earlier, we went over legal counsel. It was a fascinating meeting, I learned a lot about legal counsel. And we made the recommendation that came forth and was adopted today.
Great, thank you. Director Cotton, would you cover building insights report, please?
I have to apologize, I've been under the weather a little bit. And so, the notes are, of course, for September tenth, I think I've already done that at the last board meeting. Talking over, but I'm not sure, but I'm going to skip and talk about the tour that we had last Thursday to kind of get back on, back on track. So the committee met at Rose School. We toured Rose, that's a really nice building setup. And I'm sorry to say, that's not an elementary school right now, but maybe someday. Then we visited Green and Sunny Slope. It's a good tour, and we're doing these tours to see what we really need to get done and prioritize. And it really, it's helping us to put our, our bond together when it comes time. I did, I'm lucky to be here tonight. They provided, the district provided a scooter for me to drive around. And just right up here, the handle to make you go, it's got stuck. And it was crazy, I don't, I don't know how many people I ran over, but I did appreciate that, because we do a lot of walking on these tours, so if there's any questions from board members, you know, you can get ahold of me, and I'll, I'll go over it with you, but most of you with it, we're there. So we've got some work to do to get done.
That's it.
I really appreciated on the tour, the, you know, the breakdown of urgent and essential, vital and foundational, or modern, modernizing and enriching. You know, that's what we really have to focus our priorities, you know, it's, it's the number one. First one is whatever is urgent and essential. And, but we saw, we saw many things in all categories that we would love, love to do. You know, we, we look forward to sharing some of those needs with the community.
Thank you, and Director Krimmets, why don't you keep going and do the curriculum and instruction committee report?
Yes, we had our meeting September seventh.
Is your mic on, there we go.
We had our meeting September seventeenth. Went over a little bit of our, our summer programs, but also mainly our training. We're really focusing on, on training our staff well. And because our, our expectations are high. And so, over five hundred individual summer training sessions were held to work with our staff of all levels. And so, I, I was really excited that, you know, we're putting our time and money, you know, where our mouth is, not expecting more than what we're actually providing and putting out. We also talked about the state and federal grants that we're continuing to receive that are helping a lot with our literacy. And, you know, as, as Dan talked about today, you know, math and literacy, those are our key focuses, and that's where we're spending lots more time. I thought it was good that he shared how they've upped their instructional time. That's, that's a pretty big jump for, for these kids, you know, and so, but we have to do it in order to get the results that we, we need for them to have. It's not for us to pat ourselves on the back, you know, it, it's going to help them succeed. Also, our, our new curriculum adoptions for English language. ELA is going well, we've purchased a new curriculum for our elementary. And as, as the numbers are kind of showing, we're seeing some good improvement. And I expect that'll go quite a bit further, the teachers are very happy with it. So when they're happy, that is going to make their students happier to receive from them, and it makes us happy. So we're also working on still the curriculum for social studies coming up and SCL. Continuing in those areas to, to utilize the best curriculum possible.
Thank you. Now we have the policy committee report, Director Hammerson?
So Rod had a go-kart outside too. So either the scooter inside and then the go-kart outside. Just wanted to clarify that. But we just met a couple of days ago. Last Friday, October third. Obviously, the policies that we were presenting for first reading tonight. Were the main topic, topics of discussion, the one that we have to get done and ironed out most, obviously personal electronic devices. Pretty much outlines expectations for students' cell phone use during the school day. Main update is that the devices must be silenced and out of sight during instructional time. But also gives principals discretion to apply the policy in whatever fit is best for their situation. Secondary principals reported that the. Existing policy has been effective. There's been a marked decrease in cellphone related issues or problems affecting class focus. So that's been great. So committee members agree that updated boarding provides clear guidance while also maintaining some flexibility in administrative support at the building level. So. And then the other one was the local wellness policy that we set forth tonight. Main update on that one was. It was kind of restrictive in what we could allow in the classrooms in terms of birthday celebrations and if parents brought in snacks, it kind of, we couldn't. Really actually allow it. So we kind of adjusted that so we can't allow our kids to celebrate. But yeah, that's pretty much all I got.
Thank you. And then I will be covering the student services committee report. So we met and on October first. So the. Three things that I want to hit on is that our special education realignment and new specialized support centers are progressing well with strong staff collaboration. One of the high points about this is that seventy-three families have been returned to their home school. That's huge. We're not busing kids from going to school with, living here and having on their buddies and their friends. And yet they have to go to a school and, you know, a different school. So that is huge. I, I personally am very happy about that. A focus on staff training is leading to a decline in restraint incidents. This is another thing that's huge. So we currently have a hundred and sixty-six CPI, which is Crisis Prevention Institute trained staff, right? There's a hundred and sixty-six of them. This is a voluntary thing and they have done that. Because of that, it, it is working. Incident accounts over the last two years have dropped from a hundred and forty-four to ten. That, that is huge. That is huge. So kudos to our staff, our administrators, teachers. Who are taking this training and are, are doing this for us. And then also the request for proposal process for mental health services will continue in an effort to attract more qualified providers. So we're still looking, looking on that one. Do you have anything that you wanted to add on that as far as looking for behavioral health? Is it fine?
Yeah, we'll follow up later on the R F Q process.
Great. Thank you very much. So that concludes the committee reports. We now move on to the superintendent report. Superintendent Gordon.
Thank you very much. I do have a short. Report for you tonight. I wanted to start by saying. We have something special here in our school district. And. You know, first of all, just thank you to the board. This is, I say often, it's, this is a community service personified. This is really what a community does when they, when they serve and, and just by the amount of committee reports, just know the amount of work that goes, I, I know the amount of work that goes into these and just thank you. The board is showing up all the time. It's never a question. I just want to thank the board. I want to thank our staff who's working tremendously hard. Thank our students that are working hard. And also our families. I do want to give one quick shout out to Matt back there. Matt's making these meetings possible. This has turned into quite a, quite a production. And I want to thank among just all of our staff. It's a special shout out to Matt that's like become the M C, video coordinator and all the things. So thank you, Matt. Appreciate that. All right, you've got to, yeah, great job. A great picture here. We had a football game the other day and celebrated our vets. That was awesome. I'm going to work kind of quickly through some of these. I like, you know, the, the board's expectation is we'll focus on care, support and instruction. I've got some pictures for you here of a variety of things, kids. In and out of the classroom, but I love these ones about, you know, kids taking a lead on honoring our custodians for Custodial Appreciation Day and working the garden. And we have some kids at the slope that were able to get to Reed's port and take care, you know, work on with other districts across the state and education day. So lots of great things. Focused on making sure kids are getting the care they need and the support they need and the instruction they need. So that's happening. All the time and that's really a hard one. If we don't talk about it, people wonder what happens. We, we sometimes get really excited about the, a one day. A one, you know, a couple hour test on determining how kids are doing and it's much broader than that. I want to take a minute and just do a shout out to our principals. It's National Principals Month. I want to thank all of our leaders for the great work that they're doing. Here's the deal. When you take a look at achievement data. The number one most important hinge factor is the teacher in the classroom. And that has been the case for years. The relationship between a teacher and a student is one of the most important, is the key relationship in an educational setting. Research continues to show that the number two hinge factor is the principal in that building. It's the leader supporting. It's the leader building a culture of support, giving feedback, leading that. And I want to thank our leaders. Who are leading. When we talk about some of the things we're excited about in terms of progress. It's because we have teachers leaning in. They're working hard and we have leaders working hard and what we see is them working together for the benefit of kids, kind of like Ann just said. We do this because we want success for our kids. So thank you. And there's, you know, we heard tonight from Dr. Weber, we have reason to be excited about the progress we're making. People I talk to across the state, even in our communities, sometimes wonder like. Can we do what you say we're going to do? Can this be the highest achieving school district in the state of Oregon? I absolutely believe that's the case. Our kids can compete and are competing with anybody. But we have to work together, build a culture of improvement, a culture of respect and trust, a culture of support. Where we're giving people the things they need. And so thank you. I'm excited about the progress we're making. We celebrate that for a minute. We get back to work. That's what we're doing. So there's some really good. Things happening and we need to continue to move the dial on the support and also the progress for kids. Want to give you a couple just of capital updates real quick. The, we're about done on the Votec. East and so that's, we've got a couple doors to do and a couple of things to button up there. And just a reminder that we are going to submit an application window. For the west side of the Votec and that's going to require an award. Those are two point five million dollar immediate occupancy awards. We'll apply for another one of those for the west side. We're going to have to add in about a million and a half dollars to complete that project. I'm excited to get that done. And so just that's why we're getting close to the east side being finished up. Also at R H S, this is a recent picture, Tracy and I were there this morning, working with the contractors again. This has been a topic of discussion about the parking behind the high school. Where, where we expect that to be about a week out before things get kind of buttoned up. And I want to push, to thank the, our high school admin who are working on the plan to make sure that we can. Use that efficiently and, and it's a bit of a shift for kids, but it'll give more parking and that's needed for kids. It is moving. Yeah, it's temporary permit process. It's actually being worked on right now. These pictures were just from this week. So. You can see here that we're, the fence is down and, and we've got a little over an acre that we can get parking in there right now. It's just west of it. So as you head down, you go down Bellows and take a right on Finley back toward the softball field. It's the house on the left before the fencing. There that was purchased, house is demoed now. We believe about a hundred spots will fit in there. And so that's, that'll be a nice. A nice thing. We have, again, we have kids that are parking really far away, which may not sound like a big deal for some people, but. Students involved in athletics and activities are getting home at ten at night, walking down. The street, you know, and sometimes at night, you know, it's, it's just not very safe. So this will give more parking there, which is great. Yeah, you're, luckily your mic wasn't on, on that one, but that's, yes, will it be lit? We're working on that right now around providing lighting there as well. All right, I want to end just with this real quick. I actually started the year with a picture of my parents, my mom and dad. And one of my kids, Sam, there and I, and. I was talking to staff beginning of the year about, I wondered if I wanted to do this beginning of the year with staff, but. I talked about my mom a little bit, like it's really difficult to do everything for everybody. And the premise there was it's hard to be a spouse and a caregiver and that. Board knows this. My dad passed away this, it was on Monday, excuse me, on Sunday morning. I just want to talk just real quick about, about this. I, you know, my dad is a great person and he embraced so many things that are community values in our community. Hard work. Family. Faith. Service to others. Service to his country, service to God. His passing has caused me to reflect quite a bit on lessons that he taught me and he was a great teacher. He taught through action and words both. And I've really been thinking about this and I think the things that he taught me have been, are becoming increasingly important. He taught me things like choosing civility. Over hostility. He taught me the, the importance of learning to disagree without being disagreeable. He taught me that the life we live is the legacy we leave. He often taught me that there's no substitute for hard work. And one of the lessons he taught me that I loved is. The fact that if we treat everybody we come in contact with. As if they're going through something really difficult. Chances are we'll be right most of the time. So I just want to. Thank the board, the staff for the, the love I felt over the last week. And also just thank you for that and thank, thank you dad for teaching me these important lessons. I think they're good community lessons. As we wrestle with hard things, as we wrestle with a community on how to approach things, I think those lessons for me have been timely and I wanted to share those with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Those, those are great lessons. Great lessons indeed. Makes me sad that I didn't get to know him. Now we're going to move into individual directors reports. I think I'll just maybe start with you, Director Bishop, and do you have anything you'd like to share?
I, I do, yes. A hero mine is Desmond Tutu, Bishop Desmond Tutu. He said, my humanity is bound up in yours, for we are all, we can only be human together. Every human being, whether their beliefs, whatever their beliefs, whatever their religion is a brother or sister. Love your neighbor and treat them with compassion and respect. Anger never persuades, hostility never heals, contention never leads to lasting solutions. Too much of today's public discourse, discourse, especially online fosters enmity rather than empathy. Imagine how different our world would be. If more of us were peacemakers, building bridges of understanding rather than walls of prejudice, especially with those who see the world differently than we do. We will be judged by our families, our community, our children and our God by how we treat others, especially those who are different. You see, there is no us versus them. There is only us. To think otherwise is a lie we have been told or we tell ourselves. The need for civility and kindness, especially in our interactions with others, is paramount. We must strive to embody these principles, allowing them to guide our thoughts, our words and our actions. I've thought about a lot of the rhetoric. And the things that have gone on in our country and our community over the last years and month. And it's been heavy. And. These meetings are never fun. I understand that they're important, but I, I, I wish that we were more. That we were better peacemakers. That's all I have.
Thank you very much for sharing. Director Cubit.
I have. Two quick things. One is that I, on Tuesday, I met with the auditors. They were here. They chatted with me as the chairman of the finance committee and they are about to wrap up the audit. They'll be giving us a report. Probably by the end of next month, which we'll need due to some follow up and reporting to the board. It looked very favorable. They, it was a very relaxed environment, lots of questions, lots of interaction, but I thought it was really good meeting and I believe we're going to come, come out with a very good audit. I have one other thing, but I want, would prefer to let. Director Hammer Smith, Hammerson go next and then I may have something else to say.
Yeah, autocorrects to Hammer Smith. So don't worry about it. I, I just wanted to formally thank all the parents and students that came out tonight to voice their care and concern. Regarding the difficult R H S situation right now. I, I can only speak as myself, one of seven members on this board. But I, I believe what we're dealing with with the high school and the six Oregon state laws that have passed since two thousand and seven that regulate this subject. Are, are personally, I think they're pretty tragic and disappointing, but. Personally, in my life, I've, I've dealt with a loved one. Whose most sacred space in society have been violated in the worst way. So it upsets me to know this is happening at Roseburg High School. And even though I'm passionate about this issue, I also know as a board director, I have to act with intelligence and not emotion. For the best outcome for all of our students in a situation like this and I understand their differing opinions. But I've learned a lot in the past few months regarding various cases. The first speaker, Clay. He mentioned a few of them, twenty twenty court case in Dallas School District. Very relevant to the situation that we're going through right now. Also, he mentioned the July twenty twenty-five three athlete court case in Forest Grove School District. Trump administration is currently investigating that present day. But I, I just understand as, as a public servant, you have to act as, with intelligent, intelligence and not emotion. I know if I were to propose or set policy in Roseburg School District that was against Oregon state law. We as a district would get absolutely smoked in court for it. So I've seen the end result of litigation like this in Newburgh School District. I think you mentioned that one too. If you're not familiar with it, I would say please look into it. But I've, I've kind of sought out community leaders all across the state to counsel me on this issue. And I found, believe it or not, that the students in this situation hold more power than the local school board. So. I commend the students and parents that were vocal tonight and I hope they formally address their issues. You know, with O D E. And if any group of students and parents at any school in our district have concerns with. The results of the state law, I think the state of Oregon needs to know. And if, if they're not heard by the state, then the federal government needs to know. And I, I know that I will support in any way possible within my authority and the constraints of the law, their concerns. But. Finally, I just, I kind of wanted to propose to the board. That Janet or Stephanie. Schedule tours with Principal Vickery as soon as possible in groups of three, two and two, so we don't create quorum. With our board directors to see if there's anything we can do right here, right now. To create a mass unisex or locker room situation at the high school. If everybody in, in the board, if all of our board directors are, are on page with that. Nod, I guess, gentleman's agreement? Any objections to that? Okay, so. So I don't, yeah, well, I didn't want to turn into a formal, formal vote thing, but. I also wanted to propose that every board director provide. Report and analysis of their site visit at the ten twenty-two work session. So that we can, you know, have input. On anything that we could do right now. Because it seems like the community. Has, has expressed that there's a need to take action, some sort of action right now. And I think that we should at least see that through. That's all I got.
Just. Quickly to. Comment to our presentations and I really appreciate the, the, the input that we received, a mixed bag of input. It was respectable and that was greatly appreciated for our proceedings. I, I just need to note that we can't legally prevent. The situation from happening that some people are offended by. It, as elected officials, we're obligated to comply with Oregon laws and Oregon laws. Do not allow us to prevent or preclude. A trans student from. a trans student from using a bathroom or locker room of choice. It's very clear in the state law. However, do I personally dislike this situation? Absolutely. So I support entirely Commissioner Hammerson's proposal and concept. And would like to see how could we address this ASAP to provide security and privacy.
Thank you. Director Cotton.
Thank you, support. Steve, bringing this up forward. I just have a couple of things. Thank you, Dr. Bishop, on your report on directors. I feel like I did know Jared's dad, even though I never met him in person. Jared talked about what he taught him and you can see that through Jared every day that we've worked with him. And, and I'm sorry you've had to go through this. You know, we all love you very much. And I'm super, super glad you're here. Most people would not be able to go back and forth like you've been able to. But I realize you knew we had a board meeting going on and I appreciate that. Just kind of a little quick commercial thing. Next Thursday, I'm involved with Young Life. We do a few things at the high school and we have a banquet next Thursday. Young Life, we have a banquet next Thursday. Claire and I purchased us a table, tickets are free. If any of you would like to go to have a nice dinner and learn about Young Life, just let me know. I'll give you the particulars. I do appreciate, I wasn't going to say this, but I have to. So I can sleep tonight. I, I appreciated the comments from folks tonight. I was concerned though, however, and tomorrow at our debrief meeting, I'm going to ask to review, have the portion of the meeting with the folks speaking. I felt threatened when we, when the comment was made. Basically, I'm paraphrasing till I see a thing, but bad things are going to happen. I don't know if anybody caught that, if things don't do, that there, that is absolutely uncalled for. And with the crazy things that are going on in this world today, I want to look at that and perhaps file a complaint. Because we need, we need to be protected. And I think everybody caught that. And so not everything was joyful to me. That's all I have to say.
Director Leonie.
Well, I, you know, there's, there's two sides of the same coin. And the coin itself was just keeping kids safe. And, you know, I think that first speaker really summed it up well for me. You know, using the, the legal precedents and the issues that Salem challenges us with. And I think the last thing you said was probably the most important, that, that people need to get out and vote if they disagree and change the laws if that's what they will. So that's all I have to say.
You, Director Krimmets.
Just, I wanted to just reiterate to Jared how much we appreciate your still being so active here on the board when you're going through this. I especially liked the last line that you said about your dad sharing about, with anyone that we're talking to or dealing with, that you don't know what they going through in their life right now. And that should tone your response down in, in all ways. So just, just that was a good reminder. Thank you for sharing that. And I, I am, I feel like the meeting did go well with such sensitive things that we were considering. And, and I look forward to touring the school because I, I really think we, we have to get a picture of what's there and really assess the, you know, we don't want any of our girls in danger. And I suppose it could go in the boys bathroom too. I, I don't know, we don't usually hear that. But just to, to see what we can do, any adjustments that we can make. We're certainly, I, I think wanting to do what we can now, you know, any, anything. So, because I think we're all realizing that they should be able to feel comfortable and, and say, everybody, so. That's it, thank you.
Could I, could I do one last? I don't think my mic's on. Hello?
Okay.
One, one last thing. Cause I, I feel like I didn't really extrapolate this very well. When, when I say like what we can do, like I'm talking like duct tape, Band-Aids. Like obviously we're on a budget. I'm not like, you know, I'm not talking like bond level. We're just going to doze the, the girls locker. Yeah, but, but like what, like what could we fiscally responsibly do right now? Sorry, I should have clarified that.
Understood. So I received, or we received a letter today about our FFA chapter. And it was, it was good information. It's kind of long, but I just wanted to highlight, we have amazing students. We could look anywhere, any department and we could show you some students that are being above and beyond, are leading the pack. I mean, you just pick whatever you want, robotics, whatever, right? Our band, we have amazing kids. But, so I do want to focus on this one. So first of all, over the last five years, the Agricultural Science Program at RHS has grown by over 140%, serving only 75 students, now over 180. This is great. I love it because this goes back to our, our strategic plan where we're talking about giving the kids everything they need for their most successful futures, right? Okay, but one in particular, we had one of our students with the Oregon FFA State Agribusiness Fair with her research of plant systems, Hannah Damon, I hope I said that correctly. A Roseburg FFA chapter officer is now ranked as top 10 in the na, in the nation and will be competing at the 2025 National FFA Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana, October 29th through November 1st. Hey! So that's it for me. That's, that's what I wanted to share. So all regular business before the board has concluded, barring any objections, this meeting is adjourned.